Good evening and welcome to the Town of Cordera Planning Commission for Tuesday, October 24th. Will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Kenny?
Here.
Commissioner Bandell?
Here.
Commissioner Bouchard?
Here.
Vice Chair Rizzo?
Here.
Chair Chase?
Here. Please join me in a salute to the play.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every interest and power.
Thank you. So now we open the meeting for comment for anything that is not on tonight's agenda. So in the room here, if you have something besides what's on the agenda, please step up to the microphone and you have three minutes to say that comment. Tracy, do you have anybody on the line for that?
No Chair Chase.
Okay. So that said, and seeing no volunteers, we will close the public comment. And we will go directly into our new hearings for tonight. So we've got first on the agenda, 477 Redwood Avenue. This is a design review and side and rear setback variance application to add living area and expand a main floor deck to the existing home at 477 Redwood Avenue. This had story polls up. Mr. Boyle?
Thank you Chairman Chase and members of the planning commission and the public. Yes, as Chairman Chase mentioned, this is a design review and variance application. To be bringing up the PowerPoint for us. For a modification to an existing home at 477 Redwood Avenue. This is in the Christmas Tree Hill overlay section of the code as well. So the property is located, what I'll consider sort of the lower part of Christmas Tree Hill. Redwood Avenue, just above Cordera Madera Avenue. It's a very long and skinny lot. It's only 19 feet wide. And the home is situated quite far down front Redwood Avenue. In fact, you can't really even see it from Redwood Avenue unless you peek up over the fence. And it's about two thirds of the way down the hill on the lot. And it actually is most visible from the driveway off of Cordera Madera Avenue there. And I believe it's called Pavilion Pavilion Way. And there is pedestrian access from that Pavilion Way to 477 Redwood. There is not vehicle access there however, and there's no parking in that on that private little driveway. There is there is no, there's no on-street parking on the site either. So all parking is done on Redwood Avenue is the nearest parking. Talk a little bit about parking in the further on the presentation. And proposed site plan is shown here and that gives you a sense and it's a little bit tricky to see on the screen, but it's obviously in the in the packet in your staff report again shows the orientation of the building in relation to the lot. To the left is Redwood Avenue. They show a car parked there is the parking space the residents normally use if it's available. And down, down quite a few lengths of stairs and the path leading to the quite old single-family home, I believe I wrote in staff report built in 1907. Yes, it's a two-bedroom, two-bath house that's had minor alterations and repairs over the years, but not any significant modifications. Per the owner, the home has many structural and as well as aesthetic issues that need to be addressed. The 2,376 square foot lot again is only 19 feet wide. And is in the R1 zoning district. The lot slopes steeply downhill at approximately 42%. The lot is about 120 feet long. Next is the sense of the changes to the exterior of the building. This is the front elevation, which again you would see if you were, if you were on top of Redwood Avenue looking down. That's the front door to the left is existing to the right is proposed. Location of the front door doesn't really change. There are some modifications to the entryway. And so that front door and that wall will be brought brought towards Redwood Avenue. And then of course, as you can see, the roof is modified with a gable roof over the new kitchen, which is a smaller gable and then behind that is a gable roof. Bringing light into the living area and the great room, which we'll see on the floor plan. This is existing and proposed rear elevation, which again is seen from that driveway down below. Number of things going on in this. One is first, I'll just start out with the modifications of the two decks. The upper deck is being enlarged, new windows and new doors coming out to that deck. Providing greater access and more living area outside. Moving down, stairway as you can see is is being modified, just going straight up to the left. And also those two those two French doors to the left and the lower deck, that's access to the new play area. So that's a part of the expansion, second expansion of the building. Actually, the third. The one is the entry level that I mentioned. The second is the upper deck and the third is the play area. Lower, very bottom floor, which gives you direct access to the backyard is being converted into into an office space. This gives you the existing and proposed west elevations. Again, a little bit tricky just because it's a long skinny lot. The main, the main, you know, visual changes are upper left, you're going from that flat roof area that exists today to a gable roof. A couple of skylights provide more light into the kitchen and the great room. And then moving down the area of the of the upper deck is being expanded. And then down again, below that upper deck is that a room that's being created. That's it. And then the project, so in terms of the numbers, the project summary, again, we have quite a very small lot at 2,376 square feet. Existing floor area ratio is 45%. The proposed is slight increase of 48%. And and then your lot coverage is going from 42% and slightly being decreased because of a modification to that second level deck down to 41%. Setbacks, no change to the front and the front setbacks and no change to the side setbacks, though both and both side setbacks currently are existing non-conforming. Rear setback and conforms and I'm sorry, rear setback is non-conforming as well and going from 19 feet down to 17 feet. Height will conform going from 18, little over 18 feet to a little over 21 feet. And like I mentioned before, there's no parking currently on the lot and there's not physically impossible, but quite difficult to create a parking space. And this project does not require to meet the parking because they are not adding more than 130 square feet of floor area. And our code stipulates, and I said this in the staff report, our code stipulates that if one is adding more than 130 square feet in area to an existing non-conforming residents. The planning director can require the building to be brought up to code in terms of parking. They are not, they are not adding more than 130 square, square feet of floor area. A fair amount of the floor area that's adding in the back is subterranean. Fair amount, some of the living area that they're creating is subterranean. Back of the building digging into the hillside and that is not countered as floor area per our code. So they, they may be, they're creating more than 130 square feet of living area, but not 140 square, more than 130 square feet floor area. That's the, the trigger for, for parking. I know that it's a little bit confusing and we can dig deeper if you like. As I mentioned down below in terms of the variances, side and rear setback variances are proposed. Slide that shows that a little bit more visually. There we go. So slot side and rear setback variances for an additional 19 square feet to the entry area. So that's the, the small red box on the left. And to the left is going up the hill to Redwood Avenue. So that's variance number one, that little area is being added. Variance number, variance number two or portion of variance number two is for both to be in the side yard, I'm sorry, is a side yard setback on the other side. And that's for the approximately 72 square foot playroom. That's being added and that's the, the lower part of the site plan. And then lastly is a portion of the deck that's being added. 164 square feet is being added and the portion that's in the rear and side setback is shown in red there as well. So those are your, your three variance areas and staff is able to make the findings for those, for those encroachments. Because of the very unique size of the lot, the incredible narrowness, the, the size of lot itself and a standard lot in the zoning district is 7,500 square feet. And like I mentioned, this, this lot is 2,300. Most of the, as well, the majority of encroachments into the setbacks are are building on top of what already exists. So you've got an area like the playroom, the bottom right, currently there's a deck. And there's a deck and then there's living space down below and they're putting another box on top of that. So yes, the the new construction is increased, is adding into the setback, but it's not, except in the case of the entry level. If you wait, it's not adding it's not adding area encroaching to the setback, setback area by taking by taking over dirt or covering over dirt. It's more of covering over the existing part of the building. And so with all, with, with those recommendations and also I want to point out in the staff report is is a description, of course, of the materials that are being used. And and I also described the neighborhood outreach that was done by the applicants and they could probably talk to more about that. There were no letters of opposition to the application. As Chair Chase mentioned, story polls were installed. I don't know if any of the commissioners were able to visit the site. But like I said, it was visible from, from some parts. And with all that, staff is able to make all the findings for designer view and offer also for the variance. And recommends that the commission approve this application with the attached resolution and the attached conditions of approval. And that concludes my report. I have the design review findings there as well as variance findings. If we want to talk about any of those specifically. And open to any questions. And the project architect and owners are here as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you Phil. Before I turn to the other commissioners for questions, it says here in the staff report that there is a graphic showing which neighbors were contacted by the applicants.
Yes, I apologize. That was, I intended that to be there, but, but that was taken out and you're the latter part of the staff report and instead of showing that graphic, I provided a list of, of the three, or the, the four residents that were contacted. And in response to Commissioner Rizzo's email to me today, I submitted that to all of you. I hope you received that email. Which gained the letters of support that were
Okay, alright. Good, okay. So we'll go to questions for you guys. Daniel, do you have any questions for Mr. Boyle?
Question I have, if you can refresh my memory, where are we standing with the Christmas Tree Hill overlay?
The status of our work with design review revisions that Tracy and I have been working on and continue to work on. And yes, you are correct. We had a special meeting just with the Christmas Tree Hill folks. And that will be coming, the whole conglomeration of all the work we've done should be coming back to you folks soon. And I guess mainly to answer a direct question or there were, there were not significant changes proposed to the Christmas tree overlay. And the major change was that staff and the neighborhood and believe the commission generally supported aligning design view thresholds with the rest of the town.
So there's nothing in that conversation would affect change this review using the Christmas Tree Hill overlay ordinance? As it currently stands?
I can't think of anything. No. No, I think, yeah, if we this project would be affected by any of the proposed changes we have to the
Okay, thank you.
Okay Valerie, questions for these guys?
I just have the height questions. It's not super clear because the dimensions are not on the drawings. What are the differences between the existing to the new?
The difference between the, the existing height is approximately 18 feet. And the proposed height will be approximately 21 feet, 21 and a half feet. And the code allows a maximum of 30.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Margaret, do you have any questions for Mr. Boyle?
Yeah, Phil, could you slowly go over what you were talking about, the parking space and this adding to subterranean area? And, and explain to me what you mean by subterranean because subterranean, I think I have a different idea of what that is.
Sure. And I'll, I'll use the term subterranean and also or just a description of our, our definition of floor area. So our definition of floor area in our code is there, there are a number of different definitions and one definition states that if if the ceiling height of a room, if the distance from the ceiling height of the room to the grade to the dirt outside, if that distance is less than five feet, then that's considered, or considered subterranean and that area is not counted towards floor area. So if you've got a room or less, that's, that's pretty much underground. It's going to be very difficult, if not impossible, to have windows there. And this is, I'm kind of explaining what I think the logic of this code is. And therefore the neighbors aren't going to even see it. And so the code, the code defines that as not being floor area, not counted towards, towards the parking requirement.
Okay, and so in the staff report, it also mentions that there's going to be some excavation going on. And where is that going to be?
So that excavation you kind of see on this drawing will be, and if you see the small yeah, that small square right there. Yeah, exactly. Where Tracy's showing there, that, that area is underneath there is going to be excavated to expand the laundry room and the bathroom of the building.
Okay.
And so that the, the dirt will literally be shoveled out and carried in buckets or something out, you know, on, out of the construction site. So there won't be, it's not exterior excavation, it's interior excavation. Making there, I guess another, another way to put it is kind of they're making their, you know.
They're making their floor
Making a basement larger.
Is that it?
Pardon me?
So the floor of whatever room is above there is going to be lower?
No, if you want to show that or plan, that'd be great. The floor won't be lower, the, the floor is just going to go, the room is just going to go back into the hillside more.
Oh, okay, okay. But that's not subterranean.
Yes, it is considered
Yes, it is considered.
Yeah, right in there. If you can zoom right into there. So you're right. So that so the, the wall today, the wall roughly cuts right between the L of laundry and the B of bathroom. Okay, that's today's wall roughly. And the future wall is going to be, so they're going to dig all that out and the future wall is going to be to the left of the L and the B and they're going to have that stacking washer and dryer and that shower. So that's the, that's the subterranean interior excavation that I'm referring to.
Okay, thank you Margaret. Mr. Rizzo?
And same comment as Daniel, just about what we've been working on with the overly district. That's my first question. My second question is more of a comment just on the drawings. It was, it was even hard for me to go back and forth. It would be great if next time maybe we can request the same scale and the same orientation of the drawings. Because it was, I was going back and forth and it was kind of difficult for me to and maybe even have structural markers on there to find out, because I had a hard time kind of tracking it because of the different scales. It's kind of a comment, but I didn't have any questions for you Phil. Thank you.
Thank you Phil. Just got a quick question about the bottom of the site there as it ends at the drive that comes up from Cordera Madera Avenue. Of course, you know, surveys don't show what's on the neighbor property. But when you're standing there at the bottom of that lot, it looks like the access staircase is on the neighbor's property. Is that the case or is it on this property?
The, the drawings in the survey show it to be on this property.
Okay. At the bottom of the lot. Okay. Yeah, I didn't see them indicated at the bottom of the lot.
Yeah, on the, on the boundary in Toco survey, it shows the building. It doesn't, it doesn't, it says the upper stairs, it doesn't show the lower stairs, but the lower stairs and you're directly from the building. At that point, it gradually
No, I, okay, the architect and owner can answer that question, but it's great that they're cleaning up these things that overhang the property. Alright, so as that said, we're done up here asking questions. So now the applicant and or the architect can make a presentation to us. Yes.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Jeff Crude. I'm the architect for this project. I'm here this evening with my clients Scott and Wendy Thorpe and their daughter Maggie. Needless to say, we agree with senior planner Phil Boyle's very thorough staff report. But I would like to go over a couple of items. Also, the big picture is that Thorpes are a young couple who would like to stay in Cordera Madera. Their home at 477 Redwood was built in 1907 and over the last 116 years was not remodeled well and has a great deal of deferred maintenance. Our project was to improve the house, that it works better for their family and repair it as necessary, since in fact they love the house as well as wanting to stay here. Just as an example, I don't know if, I doubt any of you were in the house, but it, it has a very steep, narrow stairway that does not actually connect to the lowest floor. So you have to go outside to come around to get back into where the office is. Needless to say, this is a very unusual parcel, not only being small at 2,376 square feet, but it's only a little over 19 feet wide. It is impossible to even build a small addition without a side yard variance. The house is placed low on the steep lot and the only way to create suitable, usable outdoor space is through roof decks at the back of the house. Although the roof deck and the sleeping porch beneath it, which is an existing roof deck and two small additions added to the house, the lot coverage of all things has been reduced from 42.17% to 41%. We were surprised at that. So was Phil Boyle, who had his go over those numbers again and again. But in fact, it is, it is, the lot coverage is slightly smaller. The other changes to the house are the removal of what I call two appendages on the west side of the property that actually go onto the neighbor's property. This is, I think, a first for me, that kind of a minus setback on the side yard. The roof is being rebuilt with two, two gables and exposed beams to give more headroom to the upper floor, which becomes kind of a great room, which contains the living room, dining room and kitchen. Finally, the house will be getting fire resistant hardy board siding, new woo wee rated windows and composition shingles. See, we, we agree and I did go over this carefully that it does, we feel it does agree with the general plan and the Christmas tree overlay district. There are a couple of other things about the house that my client Scott would like to mention.
Do better if we pointed upwards.
When you point that microphone up, is that better? You look like a rock star.
Sounds good. Yeah, no, I just wanted to say we have loved this house. We bought it in 2009 and this project's been kind of a long time coming. There's been some starts and stops along the way, a pandemic, and then here we are finally looking at maybe being able to pull this project together, but the house definitely needs a lot of repair. It needs a foundation to begin with, which is part of that kind of subterranean structure that we need to build. We want the house to be there for another 100 years. And so we feel like we're the house's best bet at this point. I'm not sure a developer is going to want to come in and work on this tiny property and spin it for a small profit. So we really want to put the time and money into saving it and preserving it. And that's a big kind of goal of ours is that we don't really want to change the character of the house in any particular way. We want to like retain as much of the character and the quality, kind of the historic value of the house that we can. We're going to try to preserve interior. It's all like old redwood siding on the interior. So we're going to try to preserve as much as that we can. And just kind of retain the quality of it while also modernizing the building itself. And so we're hoping to go as green as we can, putting in heat pumps and probably going fully electric. And so modernizing it as well as kind of preserving it. That's kind of our goal, I guess. But I'm happy to answer any specific questions you have for us. I can answer that question about the lower part of the property.
Go ahead. Yeah. And then we'll ask the other commissioners if they
You're talking about the very bottom, like where it goes to Pavilion Path. So there is a little area there. There's a staircase off to the side that is on the neighbor's property. It's been there for, as far as I can tell, Joanne Walker, our neighbor told us it's been there for over 50, 60 years. There used to be a swing set for a family that was in that. That's originally where the landowners let them kind of open up that little space there. We're not planning to develop that space at all. In fact, we'll probably just bring our, our property line in, in line with that. But that's a conversation to have with our neighbors about how to deal with that specific little area.
Right, okay. They own it, but
They own it, but that whole back area of the house and the backside of their house They own it, but that whole back area of the house and the backside of their house, that lower property right on. Christmas or Pavilion Path, it used to be like just a kind of a wasteland of acacia trees and whatnot. When they redid that house next to us in two thousand and twelve, they kind of redid that back entryway for them, but kind of left. Our existing situation there. So.
Understandable, okay. Before you go anywhere, uh, Valerie, do you have any questions for this applicant? All right. All right, Daniel?
Yeah, the staff report on page nine uh, refers to. On demand gas, water heater, new efficient Energy Star. Appliances, it doesn't say whether they're gas or electric. Although Energy Star would imply that. And a high efficiency gas furnace, yet you referred to uh, maybe wanting to be all electric. Given that the town is requiring all electric for new construction, considering. Uh, depending on how much renovation, all electric requirements. Uh, are you willing to uh, commit to all electric?
Yes. Yeah, that's a conversation we haven't fully developed to the, the whole energy plan for the house, but that is, that's our goal is to. Go fully electric, yes.
Thank you.
Chair Chase, if I may, um, just to note that the town actually isn't able to enforce the all electric. Um, code at this time due to um, litigation. That um. So just wanted to make that.
We're still happy to do it.
Thank you, Amy. Yeah, it's a conundrum right now. Margaret, do you have any questions here?
Um, I did in. Because I was, I'm not familiar, I'm from East Cora Madera.
Okay.
So Christmas Tree Hill is.
It's its own world up there.
Its own world, um, and I applaud you for trying to preserve its character, I think. You have a particularly big challenge there.
Absolutely.
Um. But I do live on a hillside and drainage is an issue. Have you?
You think about it all the time.
Somebody who can help you with drainage.
Absolutely, yeah. I don't know if I can answer that better.
No, I I mean, we did show some drainage on these plans, but we will. Definitely be working with a civil engineer to design drainage, because.
And the other thing that struck me is um, the materials that you're using and. The level of uh. Fire. What I was struck with, let me put it this way, is that. There better not be a fire there, because if you're trying to come down. And the fire truck is coming up. You're in trouble.
At Pavilion Path.
And so are you going to use the most fire safe? Are these the most fire safe materials that are on the market today?
Yes, yeah, yeah, we are going to use these hardy uh. Let's hurt hardy plank shingles, but they're actually a cement product. They look like. Shingles, they do a be- beautiful job of, they come pre-colored or you can paint it. Composition shingle roofing, and then the windows are going to be up to the wee standards with tempered glass. So it'll be as. I don't know what to say, other, other than this side of a bomb, bomb shelter, it's as good as you can do.
Has the fire, have, have the, have the fire inspector been there? The fire department.
Well, no, but they, they'll go over the plans carefully. You know, that's part of uh, getting the building permit.
Okay.
And, and then they'll, the, the house will have to be sprinkled also.
Good.
All right, that's it, Margaret. All right, Mr. Rizzo.
His questions for Jeff. Jeff, um, on the, on the guardrails, they're solid. Walls are, is there a particular reason to have them as solid walls? Are you?
Yeah, well, I, I, I like solid walls because they give a lot of privacy. This, this is a really small house, so. The bedrooms are small, so we called it a sleeping porch on that lower one, and that gives people really good privacy there and up above. Although we did um, we stopped the rails at three feet and then put another little, like a pipe rail above that, so they don't seem. Too big, but it's really for the privacy and the enjoyment of my. Clients, I don't think we ever talked about the rails, but. That's why I did it.
The walls on the lower sleeping. Off we probably be opened.
Okay, yeah, if they want to do something else, that's, that would be fine with me. Thank you. I did it, yeah.
All right, I do not have any questions for you. I, I, I have a little concern about the pathway and it's a question for staff, I think. Um, and just. Is the Pavilion Path a public right of way, or is it privately held? I'm just worried, wondering about. It's.
It's a public road.
It is, okay, so.
It used to go all the way up to Redwood F.
Got it.
Eventually, at some point, got closed off by. I don't even know if it's. Owned a land up there or if they just claimed it, but.
Uh, well, we don't talk about that.
Um, but the building path, we don't actually, I mean, we have access footpath to it, but um. There's a driveway to Joanne Walker's house, the driveway to Steve and Sarah Ramos's house. And then Des and Lori, Doherty have access to a parking spot there too.
So you have access out of the house in the fire, right?
Yes, but not vehicle access necessarily.
All right, well, thank you. Um, thank you, guys. Uh, we'll now open it up to public comment. Um, for anybody in the room or online that wants to make a comment for three minutes. May step up to the microphone and uh. If you can, state your name and um, hear what you have to say. So. I don't see any volunteers there right now. Basically, do you have anybody online?
No, Chair Chase.
All right, well, we often say going once, twice. Three times, and we'll close the public comment section for this item. So that means we got to talk about it up here. All right. Margaret, you want to start on this?
First.
Hmm.
Okay. Well, as I said before, I applaud you. For trying to keep the personality of that house and um. The neighborhood, I, I will say I had a very hard time seeing anything there. I had no place to park. I mean, I couldn't park, everything was taken up. And there were really no instructions about this lower. Street. That you can see from, so. I don't have much of a, I didn't have any view at all, actually. But um, as I said, the thing that concerned me the most was the idea of a fire. And there's only basically one lane there. And it's a very narrow, dangerous kind of lane, so. So good luck. It's, it's kind of scary, but otherwise I really think it's um, a good project and I think that um. It probably, an older house like that does need to be looked at very carefully, and if you're going to put a foundation in and. Um, and do all the repairs so you can live there for a long time. Going to be hard getting construction materials there too, but good luck.
Well, my question to you would be, uh, do you have any uh, issues with the variance findings at all? Can you make those?
I, I can make the findings only because I don't see how they can do anything. Without them.
Right. Okay. Very good. Valerie.
Right, yes, I can also see how challenging this lot is and I. Um, also can make the findings in terms of the variances. I don't have an issue with that. I do have um. Recommendations for the design specifically for the rear deck. It does seem like. Um, the proposed one is boxing out. Um, and again, I can see why, because you're trying to leverage the all possible square footage that you have there. But um, to. Um, Jim's point earlier. I feel like if you could have just opened up the railing, the guardrails a little bit more. It would help the design just to uh, elevate it a little bit so that it doesn't feel as, you know, a box that is next to the existing house. Instead, and um, I would also consider that the same comment on the sleeping porch as well, so that. It again, just provide a little bit more openness, considering how private the building is already on the hill, like. I feel like it shouldn't. Have any privacy issues, um, so there probably wouldn't be necessity to. Have these solid walls there. Um, so that will be just my comment on, on that.
Okay, we'll come back to with that um, shortly, but um. Thank you, all right, um, Daniel.
Yeah, um, thank the staff for the report, uh, which I thought was very thorough. Uh, and the presentation by, by uh, the owner and the architect. Uh, clearly, you know, I think this, this lot is extremely unusual in Cora Madera, it's width and its size. Uh, and the age of the home. And I think um, the setting of the house relative to your neighbors, where they're, they're further apart and not adjacent. Uh, where the side yard would be setbacks would be much more of a concern, but clearly you're not really facing those houses. Uh, the fact that it's so heavily wooded there, I think also ameliorates any impact on your neighbors. Um. And uh. And I think the proposed architectural changes are both consistent with the house architecture today, and I think the neighborhood in terms of materials and color. Uh, so I appreciate that. Um, I, I would like to see somehow uh, a commitment to uh, fully electric. Uh, whether that ends up, you know, somehow in the record here for staff uh, review. But I can certainly support on those terms, uh, and I think looking through the staff, uh, all of the. Uh, both um, the, the town master plan and other findings uh. Um, totally comfortable with.
Okay, that's great, thank you. Um, all right. That's pretty clear. Mr. Rizzo.
Sure.
So I, I agree with. All the commissioners that lines with our general policies, uh, maintaining use, compatibility to neighborhood, encouraging the owner to invest in the property and improvements. Um, especially maintaining the footprint, minimizing. The demolition and debris removal, hopefully. Uh, the fire resistive qualities of the new resilient building materials definitely a plus. With all the trees around there, um, big time, great upgrades for what we're trying to achieve here as a town. Um. Sounds like the applicants are moving for, for uh, with. More of an electric energy source on most of their appliances, and so I think that that. Hopefully in the future will align with the, with the, the actual code, but um, we obviously encourage it at our, at our, our level. Um, since this is a variance application, um, I think it's important to note how unique the lot is, as Daniel said, it's just a very, very unique situation. With existing non-conforming use. So the lot does. Have special circumstances that result in the practical difficulty and hardship to an applicant to improve their property, which. Completely aligns with what it says directly in our, in our findings. Um, also, it doesn't sound like any of the neighbors um, have any issues with this particular proposal and. The impacts to the neighbors are definitely minimal, if anything. Uh, and I can totally, I'm aligned with all the other commissioners to support. The variance findings, uh, and the designer applications, but I definitely would. Encourage the design to ha- maybe have a lighter railing at least at the top part. If the applicants decide not to move with the lower depart. I mean, the top, the top railing, if it had a lighter, more transparent look, would really bring the scale down a little bit from the lower side of the property. But other than that, I'm in full support of. Of the design. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Um, I think this is the ideal uh, fix up. Project that we like to encourage in Cora Madera, right? An owner who says, I want to live here, I want to stay here, and I want to make the best out of this. This is exactly what needs to happen. So um, from my perspective, I would encourage this and you. In this effort, um, I think the uh, cleanup of the house, the site. Around, right at the edges of the house is important, and you've done that. You're not asking for anything unreasonable here. I think the variances are all acceptable. Um, and um. I, looking at the house, uh, it is extremely surrounded by uh. Trees and plantings at the moment. Trees go away, they die, or they get cut down and things, and some of them are on the, they're all on the neighbor's property, really, so. With that said, um. You know, I, I sort of agree with your inclination to want to enclose the railings and have some privacy in there. The trees can go away. Um. And you'd be left fully exposed, otherwise it's incredibly enclosed. Um. So, um. At some point. Fire marshal is going to get up there and direct them to cut some trees down, because it's, it's pretty intensive up there. Um, so. I'm, from my perspective, I can make all of the findings. And um, I think you've come up with a design that's. Appropriate for that circumstance, so um, I think it's a great effort. I applaud you for this. So with that said, um. Now, we would typically go to a commissioner for a motion, but we have two commissioners that would like to see something about the railings. Now, do you want to put that as a condition of approval? Uh, or describe it in further detail, or how would you like to address that? Valerie, Jim. So here we have, we can't, we don't want to redesign this for.
I don't want to redesign it. Could it, could I? All right.
May I ask the applicant if that's something that, that would completely deter them from moving forward? Chair Chase, or is that completely?
Um, I think we heard from them that they would do that, right? So um, yes.
Valerie, I am, uh, I think that the upper floor would be my, I'm not, and the sleeping porch, I think that they're, they're. That's something that they, I think they want to keep enclosed from what I gather from the presentation. Is that something that you would consider as a? Option?
Yes, I think um, opening up the upper would really help. Maybe entertain the idea of changing the material on the bottom, just again, this is not because like, um, I mean, I'm okay with enclosed on the bottom. But uh, maybe entertaining to change the material just to give a, a little bit of a pop. As well uh, on that area, so it stands out and makes it a little bit different there. But um, definitely would love to see the opening of the upper.
Okay.
Okay.
So that said.
With the condition of, of changing the upper.
I just want to ask uh, staff over here if uh, they're willing to uh, administer that. Um. Request for a lighter railing at the up, upper level as a part of the approval.
Um, certainly, that can be added as a condition of approval. Um, to the final resolution. And so you want a more open railing, you know, on the upper deck. Um, any more specifics beyond being more open?
Right, so the options for that are usually a glass rail or a balluster rail. Um, a balluster rail or even a half solid, half baluster. Rail could do that, so, you know, it's like. Fully open, balluster, half open, all of those things are possibilities, so.
Did I say open guardrail system? Would that be adequate?
That, that, yes, obviously it needs to meet the building code in terms of.
Yes.
Uh, yes.
Are you okay with that?
I am.
Okay, all right. And I would ask for a motion with that.
I'm going to make an motion to approve in the matter of uh, design review and side and rear side setback variance. Application PL two, three dash zero zero five two to add a living area and expand the main floor deck. An existing home at four seventy seven Redwood Avenue with the condition that the upper deck. Have an open rail and guardrail system uh, that meets the building code.
Second.
Okay. Let's call a vote.
Commissioner Kenny?
Hi.
Commissioner Ben Dow?
Yes.
Commissioner Bushair? I'm going to get this right.
Yes.
Vice Chair Rizzo?
Yes.
And Chair Chase.
Hi. All right. You have anything to read? You have anything to read?
Yes, I read the the appeal statement is that any decision of the planning commission may be appealed to the town council. Within ten calendar days of deceiving, appeal forms are available. At the planning at the community development department. In the town of Corder Madara and the fine fee is three hundred dollars.
There we have it. End of item. So. And. Your daughter didn't say anything. Okay.
But thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Dad, I want to go now. Okay. So Mr. Boyle is handing out samples while he's doing that. We're going to say the next item on the agenda is three forty six Corder Madara Town Center. Major design review application for modification to the existing retail space number three forty six within Corder Madara Town Center. Otherwise known as the new Rome. So. Let's get to the meat of the matter here.
That will be the that will be the first and last. Yes, good evening. Again, this is an exterior modifications and interior modifications to the existing space. Within the town center at three four six. For Madera Town Center, and this is located on this parcel is located on the east side. Of Town Center. Close to the. Central east entrance of Town Center. Was formerly Vietnamese restaurant. Which I will show pictures of in a moment. The project, the staff report was a tremendous amount of help was done by Claire Smith. Who is in our audience next to Martha there. Claire is a planning consultant that's been with us for several months and was very helpful in creating this staff board. So thank you, Claire. The project does not include any. Interior expansion. And it really doesn't include any exterior expansion either, the the lease line. Today is basically where all that vegetation is and where that that exterior exterior canopy is, that's the lease line. And the new lease line. Or that that same line will be delineated by that black. Railing that you see there, and if it was to extend all the way to the building, it would encompass that area. So the the total square footage interior and exterior is not changing. Just in talking about that black barrier that is a requirement of ABC. And that's why that is there because they will be serving alcohol outside. And we did do a fair amount of research and discovered that I was surprised that ABC really doesn't have a requirement that that be gated. Or anything. And so that big opening. Is okay with with the ABC. So I can jump into that. The application is is for design review. Design review is required at the town center and also at the village. For significant modifications to the exterior of buildings. That face either one of the parking lots or visible from the highway. To the same thing. So that's why this is coming to you, and this is also an application for the proposed signs that they are showing. Another view, just side elevation, really just kind of another view of the same elevation. To the left, there is a seize candy. And so there will be a, as you can see, outdoor seating, there'll be a CMU wall there. And then beyond that additional seating, and then there's also a. An exterior, kind of go back here, an exterior menu. And an exterior window where one can order their food. The outside. Floor plan, a lot of details, but just kind of give you an overview of what's going on, starting from the right. That's the exterior to the the round. Section there is that is the proposed fire pit, which we'll talk about. And and then, you know, to the left of that, moving up is is the exterior tables. And then coming into the the main part of the building, you've got, again, numerous indoor tables. And then to the right will be a bar with seating and is is a full bar. In alcohol being served. And then to the left is the behind behind the house kitchen. This is the exterior, pictures of the exterior materials that being being proposed and to the right of Mr. Kenny, Dr. Mr. Kenny is the. Is the the samples of the materials that they are proposing for the for the outside. And this is some of the proposed patio furniture. As well as the the barbecue pit. Which is the fire pit, no barbecue. It does this. As part of this application is a sign permit. And here we we delineate the location of the sign, the proposed. Sign that they are asking for for signs that they're asking for, and then the maximum area that's allowed. And all both signs meet all the requirements of the town center design guidelines. And so there we make all the findings for the proposed signs and signs will be illuminated. Which are illustrated on the plans that are provided to you. And just another idea or. Images of some of the other neighboring storefronts, obviously both of these buildings are are quite large, much larger. But it kind of shows that these as more newer, sort of more modern buildings. Somewhat similar to the proposal and obviously saw and the the existing facade is. Is more much more original for the town center with more of a Mediterranean style, and they're going for much more of a a modern look. And with that short staff report or short presentation, I'm able to make all the findings. Claire and I are able to make all the findings for design review. And encourage or recommend that you approve the tax resolution with the attached conditions of approval.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Boyle. So we'll entertain some questions from the commissioners for you about the project, if there are any. Margaret, do you have any questions for Mr. Boyle?
I'm just wondering. What the. The town center regulations or design review kind of how that fits in with ours? I know we've done this before.
Yes. Well, the the town center design guidelines do have specific things regarding signs. And as we showed there on the staff report, they have particular regulations on square footage and number of signs and type of signs. They don't have. And there there are general design guidelines or general architectural guidelines. In the town centers document, but there isn't real exact specific. I think they are, they support an eclectic look of storefronts is what we have.
So do they go through a separate design review? After us or before us, or who does that design review?
The plans are submitted to the town center. Prior to coming to us and they and they stamp and approve those.
Okay. And and what is the capacity of the of the indoor seating going to be?
I think I'm going to leave that to the applicant. I don't think I have that number, but I'm sure they do. Imagine they do.
I don't have any other questions.
Okay.
Or I guess I have one.
Oh, yes.
Is there going to be music?
Their project description does not state whether there will or will not be music.
Okay.
But we do have a. What is it? We we certainly have a section of our code that deals with outdoor live music. I don't know if our code gets into the details of speakers. Whether speakers are allowed or not allowed, I know this came up for Flores. Yes. I know Martha or Tracy, do you know if we have a speaker?
Needs that that live and or amplified music as far as a use permit. Guessing the intent that is. Concert type of. Rather than speakers, it's silent on. What amplified really means. Lots of people have music for ambience. Doesn't tell us what to do if that's what. Certainly a live band or a DJ or whatnot.
Right. Definition. Another thing we could change in our code, right? Clarify the definition of amplified. But music's loud. If it's under a certain decimal, right? There's no, there's nothing, do you need a use permit to have music outside, do you? Done just to have ambience?
While our noise ordinance controls musical includes musical instruments as well as mechanical noise. So I you couldn't, you could have the music, but it couldn't violate the noise ordinance, certainly, especially that would have a special permit if that's what's happening.
I guess the question is if you don't need a permit to have music spill out as long as it doesn't. Yeah, okay.
But when we did the the reviewed floors, that was outdoor music, but it was your sound system. And I recall that there was some kind of problem with moving. Moving it, so it didn't interfere with other businesses.
It was just too loud, yeah. Yeah. That came back to staff, I think, in some way, yeah.
Did it come back to staff and we. Hopefully resolve it, and we can certainly ask ask the applicants if they have any proposal for outdoor music or outdoor speakers.
Thank you.
Okay. I'll refrain from humorous comment, so all right. Daniel, do you have any questions for these guys?
On the floor plan. Where the. There's that. Looks like a takeout window and there's a menu there. And if you go further down, there's. A solid wall. What what's happening, there's item four says kiosk by owner, what's happening behind that in that area right there?
On two point oh one, I see that it says in kiosk by owner, we may have to add.
That one right there. Well, that's that whole area.
That whole area is the. That whole area is the counter, I believe, the exterior counter. For ordering, is that?
Yeah, we'll get you up here in a minute.
We we can wait for them to answer that.
Yeah.
The second question is the the. The on the primary sign, it's backlit on the drawings, it looks like it's black. What actual? What actual colors are going to be and when the light's on?
Pardon me?
Well, the sign here looks black.
Okay. So. Kim when he gets up there.
Okay, sure.
All right. So it's it. Backlit, I think you can direct this, but so the light is reflected to the building, but you're right, the letters look black on the front, but they're backlit. So they're silhouetted.
Can we? They can clarify that.
Yeah. Okay, Valerie?
I have no provisions for stuff.
Okay. Mr. Rizzo.
Curious about the takeout window. I've never seen, so, or at least in front of us.
Not in front of us, right?
Yeah, so is that is that a new thing that we've. Are looking at, I mean, there's nothing in the in the planning code that even talks about it, so it's.
Right, we have. We have a prohibition against drive up, but we don't have a prohibition against walk up. Yeah, I can't think of any other restaurant in town, certainly things, these outdoor menus and outdoor windows popped up during COVID. When, you know, stores were closed, so food was going through that way. But we don't have any in our code that that restricts them and and addresses them, and I think this is the. The one and only that I know of.
Okay, great, thank you.
Valerie has some information about that. Valerie?
Well, I was just going to clarify.
Yeah, go ahead, put your mic.
I was just clarifying that World Grabs, they have a takeout window. And you 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 don't order through the takeout window, but you pick up your orders there if you order online.
I was like, this one's directly in the kitchen, but I'm thinking way beyond probably this conversation, thinking about building code, but.
Yeah.
Functionally, I know what you're saying, because I remember when it was the old one. It may have been in the kitchen back in the day, but can't remember. But yeah, you're you are correct.
Laurel Village, the chicken place. Has a takeout window like this.
Johnny's Donuts.
Right. Okay, all right, I don't have any questions for you guys, so. You guys over there, time for a architectural presentation.
Did you bring samples?
I didn't, I did not, sorry. Good evening, everyone. My name is Josh Spiegelman. I'm the owner and founder of Rome Artisan Burgers. We opened our first location on Union Street in San Francisco in June two thousand and ten. So the whole idea of Rome is we're all about sustainability and grass fed beef and free range turkey and bison. Local produce, organic shakes from Strauss Family Creamery and just really doing the best sourcing we can, so. We. We have five locations across the Bay Area and have always been looking at Marin, looking for the right opportunity. I actually grew up over the hill. My parents are here with me tonight. We had dinner earlier. I went to Redwood High School and we used to. Come to the town center for lunch and the counter was McDonald's and the place that we're taking over is an Arby's, so. It's kind of come full circle, and I think that. People really kind of change the way they think about food and the way they think about eating and. We certainly think about eating differently, and although at Rome we do burgers, fries and shakes, we we try and do it better and with integrity and. Have a lot of other options too, so anyone. Can come in and bring, you know, their whole family or come on their own and have a really good nutrient rich meal, whether it be. Vegan, vegetarian, paleo, or people who like to eat meat and. We're really excited to open up in in Corder Madara and welcome everyone in and. Definitely here to answer any questions and our architect John Rojas is as well, so thanks for your time.
Thank you. Done.
Hi, thank you commissioners and staff for all this. It's always great for us to get feedback on what we do. We don't get a lot of really. Unbiased feedback from a lot of people and it's really nice to hear, so appreciate all your thoughts in advance. I'm happy to walk through. Is what whatever you need me to on the on the facade design or interior design as you'd like. I don't want to get too long winded. If there's questions you have for me, feel free to to jump in and ask me. I've known Josh for a while now, been friends socially before Rome. And. About a year and a half ago or so, he approached us to look at this particular space and or to look at a rebrand of Rome, really, because. Been around for over ten years, as he said, and I think it was, you know, an opportunity to look at a refresh of what they had and and then this space. Came available and it was an opportunity for us to. Came available and it was an opportunity for us to uh to work through what a refresh of the Rome brand might be. Uh, the interesting thing about this particular building, as you know, it's a Vietnamese restaurant, it was an Arby's before, it's a kind of an odd. Shape and plan, it's, you know, got a pretty harsh diagonal, um. Got some significant columns that you don't really see at first blush. Um, faces east, faces one oh one, as you know, faces a parking lot. One of the things that was really important to us going into it was making sure that. It. Resonated with the town centers, um, some of the architecture that's already there, and I, I think the architecture that's there that I'm referring to is really. The kind of bones of of the center itself, the, the hip roof, clay tile, those elements there that I, that. Have been sort of expanded on even by Sephora nearby and 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 they've done. You know, I think with with the city of Turf's done a a great deal of work to make sure that. New work is sympathetic with what's there. And what we were trying to do is trying to hang on to some of that existing fabric, but in, but bring in some new life. With a more modern interpretation, that modern interpretation, hoping we can get a strong enough. Basic architectural idea that can be read from the roadway and from the parking lot. With a sort of a single like monolithic. Let's call it opening for now, um predominantly made of glass, um. Incorporating the existing structure in it, that glass is there to rectify what we saw was a problem with. The existing restaurant, which was just a dark. All, you know, void that was there with the, with the. Covered awning or covered uh outdoor patio and and, you know, pretty small openings leading into the restaurant, so. It was important to us to get, to find a place to get light into this restaurant. It's, it's like I said, it's east-facing, so it gets morning light. Pretty much mostly, most part of the day, so keeping it as open as possible was important to us, but. As we got into the design, we, we started to realize that instead of just having a restaurant where people. Came into it and experienced it only from the face and from the interior. Um, we wanted to bring some of that restaurant out, so when you talk about what the uh, you know, this, this. Takeout window is, I mean, that is really our expression to sort of reintroduce in this modern framework, this idea of a. Roadside shack or whatever you want to call it in a modern way where people can interface with the restaurant. Ordering to-go uh. Ice cream, soft serve, things like that, picking up their items, that sort of thing, so it, so it allows. The people that are shopping at Town Center to. Also come in and integrate with this building without having to go inside it. So that's just, just so you, I know that that had come up about the takeout window, I think it's appropriate to address it. Um. But it offers that this wood panel system. Paired with the glass offers a nice yin and yang to to this facade, and I think it sort of breaks it down. From the large glass, which really feels like it's. Sort of viewed from a vehicular level to this wood, which is scaled down, which offers it as a more pedestrian level. Um. Connecting all that is this outdoor patio. Uh, now, her patio is uh does have this ABC barrier. They do serve alcohol, it's beer and wine only, it's not full alcohol, so it's not. Truly a bar inside, it's really, it's a beer and wine bar, but having eaten at Rome, I don't know if any of you have. I feel like it's a lot of people who are eating their burgers at a bar, watching a. Uh, an event or sports, you know, a game on TV. Um, it's not that kind of bar where people are. Cocktailing, um, and in in regards to the, to the speaker issue, um. At Town Center, there, there are speakers already at the restaurants. Um, they regulate it, they self-regulate it, I guess. Um, but I know when, if anybody has a complaint within the Town Center, and I don't know about the restaurant floor, I think it was Flores, you said.
Flores.
Um, I don't know about that, because it seems like it's a little bit, that's kind of an outlier, but within the Town Center, I think. Other, other retailers are, they're likely to say something if they don't feel like they're getting adequate, uh, that people are getting drowned out. Uh, but they do have speakers um at Town Center, so. There's regulation that would probably go through, should go through them. Um, and I think as far as speakers go for. This project, it would be very minimal. We don't really have a ton of room for speakers anyways, and I think it's a. As an ambiance generator, I think it would be a, a nice to have, but not a, an essential element. Um. If there's any questions, I'm happy, this would be a great time to get it, otherwise I'll get into the interior.
Well, we'll just knock a couple of the low-hanging fruit off here, so uh Margaret asked about. Occupancy, how many is it designed for and how many can it handle? Those are the two different numbers.
Yeah, I mean, it, it can handle interior from a code perspective, it's less than fifty total occupants. Um, it can seat around thirty, um, including accessible seating. Um, on the inside, on the exterior, there are twelve. Seats, three tables of of four, plus uh there is a, a large bench that has been discussed around a uh open fire pit. And that's more for casual, more for ambiance than seating, I think we were. We were concerned about putting seating um so close to the parking area. There, so what, what we've done is we've, we've taken the, uh, as, as uh as Boyle said, the, the uh. Existing footprint that the Vietnamese restaurant used for their outdoor patio. And put in a low wall that is actually tiled, it was called out a CMU, but it's, it's truthfully porcelain tile. I think there's a sample of it there, so it's a little bit nicer than that with the windscreen. That allows people to uh feel a little safer sitting by the cars. There, because the cars are, you know, you're up against a parking lot and we were concerned that putting seating out there would be less than desirable.
Um, you've heard a question from Daniel over here about the signage, um, the cover photo has black letters. Would you explain the light and the lighting?
Correct, the, so from a legibility standpoint, the, the letters have to do have to contrast off of the uh. Finish of the wall. Um, the finish for these letters is a. I would, I don't want to call it black, because it's more of an anodized color, but it's like a dark. Dark, dark bronzy black, I mean, it's fair from the, you know, layman's terms to say black for, um, but it's a, it's a reverse. Pan letter, I believe, or halo lit, so light does come from the back, so at night. You can read it, in the daytime, you can read it, um. The letter, the color of that illumination is a red, it is one of the trade dress colors of Rome is red. So we've introduced it very subtly, we've had long conversations about how much red. Um, should be on this facade, and I think the. End of the day, we came down to a palette that's far more subtle in color and tone. And then a little bit of pops of color in some, in the signage, and the signage being the, the halo lit red letters on Rome and the. Ice cream. Sign that's on the, on the wood, which is actually not exactly in the, in the package, it's not exactly the right ice cream cone. A little bit better than that, I don't know how that got in there, but we've got a better version to, if you want to see it.
Um, okay, uh, Daniel, I, I have more questions about that red. Do you have anything you want to ask him about this, the lighting? Okay, so. The red lighting that up, um. It's not gonna be white light, it's gonna be red light on the white stucco, essentially.
At night, yeah, it's just, it's a, it's more of a glowy at night. You know, it doesn't, it's not an internally lit letter, we didn't want to go that route, which felt. You know, I'm not even sure if, if Town Center uh Quarter Madera would have allowed it. Um. But we wanted to have something that was a reverse pan, but letter, just to glow up there.
Okay, I have other questions, but uh go ahead with what you want to say.
Oh, no, I, I think, well, I did want to say something, I, I know there was a question, the other piece of low-hanging fruit was. Um, what does Town Center Quarter Madera um do in terms of their review, and they do have, um. More stringent guidelines than I think uh were perhaps discussed, they, they do require that you replace the storefronts. Um, out of the system, um, and they, they are fairly, they have a. Way where they've looked at the entire center and they've broken it up into different zones, and those zones have different side guidelines on them. Though we are part of a certain zone, we've met those guidelines for them. They have a, they, they take in the drawings, review them with, they have their own internal architect, uh, that they, they. Have review all the documents and they've reviewed them. They gave us some feedback, responded to their feedback, and uh that's what was presented to the city. In terms of the interior, I think it's uh. I, as Josh had alluded to before, you know, the, the materiality, um. Well, Rome's aesthetic is, is about honesty and integrity, and I think we were really hoping to, to introduce that into the material palette, so. Where we can, we're using real woods, um, I don't know where we can, I think everywhere we are, we have, we're not using any fake wood anywhere, I mean, it's all. It's all honest wood, we're gonna use some uh interior, the plaster on the interior is all hand-applied, it's not just sheet rock, and we're trying to. Go about this in a way where. It, what the essence is when you're inside embodies what his ethos is as a restaurateur, so. That was a big part of how we came about the entire palette indoors and outdoors. Uh, the indoor seating, like I said, is about thirty seats, um. Around eight or so at the bar seating and the rest is uh. Inside the restaurant, there's a communal table within that, that's a part of the Rome brand that. Seats uh, in this case is pretty small, just because the space requirements are fairly tight, and this is a very strange restaurant, dangerous uh configuration. We didn't move the, we didn't move the interior kitchen much, we just rearranged it. Little thing has been gutted on the interior to get rid of some, some, it's an old building. Everything in there is old. That we've, it's a full gut on the interior.
Okay, yeah, uh, please, go ahead, Jim.
So uh on the sign, it, only Rome is gonna be. Is gonna be black with. With red returns and are those acrylic? So when they get illuminated, they get red from the white light? Is that the?
Yeah, it would be, yeah, that would be right. It's not the light itself isn't red, it's the actual. The actual size of it, yeah.
It's just the size to return, and then, and then that doesn't happen on the burger, it's just the Rome?
No, not on the burger, just on the.
And, and uh the sign that's next to the ice cream cone, is that says digitally printed, that's not a digital sign, it's just a. Sign that's printed?
Or is that? That, that's, is that, is it the menu board? Can you show me?
Yeah, yeah, the, it says digitally printed, non-eliminated menu board, um.
Right, so the, so in keeping with the notion of this being a uh uh. Shack, or, you know, a, a, a smaller venue, pedestrian venue, we. Wanted to have a menu that they could have out there that. Should people order at the, at this to-go window, they had it, that's, it's a smaller menu, I don't think it's a full menu. Yeah, just ice creams. It's a bit more of a gestural sign, very like romantic.
Is it gonna be downlit at night?
There are, above it, there is an eyebrow above it, it has a recessed downlight that runs across it and lights. That's, there's only a couple of lights on the exterior, so there's that light which downlights that area, and then within the exterior canopy. Uh, there's some, some cans that light down there, and then on the wall, there's some step, there's some low wall uh lights that light up the perimeter.
I have a. Okay, yeah, so the, the little ice cream sign is not lit, um, except base lit maybe, um.
No, the ice, the ice cream, the button sign is actually, I think that one is internally lit.
Right.
That red, that, that's the own, that's the other popper red, that with the ice cream cone on it, yeah.
Uh, Daniel had a question about that takeout counter, um, uh. Will, do you have a, anything you can put on screen about that?
Sure, we can, we can bring up the floor plan again.
Correct, Daniel, you want to know what's going on there at that front piece?
Well, uh, actually, um. I really like um the amount of glazing you have, the openness, uh, which I think really the. Existing um. Building there, as, as you pointed out, thick canopy and it's dark and you don't really get any sense of what's going on. So my question is, could that glazing be extended a little bit? Closer to the. Uh, to the red dot.
So, so you are, um. You are where we were when we first laid this out. We were like, let's do this all glass, right? It was like, made sense. The, the issue is, is that on the inside of the restaurant, we actually need some wall space for functionality of the restaurant. You know, those menu boards and things like that, that go, that go inside, um, and that solid wall that you referred to there, that's. Takes, takes that load, truthfully. Um, and it sets up this, the way that we've, like I said, it's a bit of a yin and yang between the glass, the solid and the void. And um, you know, I think in the end. Pretty happy with the fact that you do get that. Material break between the two, and otherwise I think it would look pretty diminutive. Um, to have the wood get any smaller on that facade. That's, that's the, that's the storyline behind it, but yeah, we were, we were right there with you when we first started. And I think we've evolved to this and frankly, I think it's probably the better solution, having seen them both.
Thank you. You have anything else?
I just have a question on the materials, so you have two, are those two options on the woods or, um. Because, or one wood is exterior and another one. You, do you mind walking through what those are? Okay.
Change up something here, so, so please. There are, there are two woods on the project, a light and a dark, let's call, let's call it that, um. The light wood, these are very representational, the wood that I just presented is a, is. Truly the product, it's a, an acoya wood, it's a totally sustainable, cradle-to-cradle product. Um, and perfect for this application. That darker chestnut acorn color is. One of the colors in palette, the interior palette has a mix of that color. And a lighter version of it, which in a hickory, and that hickory. Will be stained to hit that color value.
So, so the lighter on the inside, the darker on the outside, for us of the plan right now, right? And. What is the weathering of this wood?
So that wood has been, is treated, like I said, it's a, I want to, I would say, treated always sounds terrible when you talk about these things. But it's a, it's a cradle-to-cradle platinum certified product, it is like at the highest level of, of sustainability, which is really important. For us. Um, given what we talked about with the sort of integrity of the materials. Because the way they've treated it, it does, that stain is the stain you get. In years down the road, it's not like a, a cedar that weathers and you see every nail hole and everything else, this is. It's a, it's a product that is built to be. Used outdoors like this. Happy to provide more literature, should anybody in the commission need to see it.
Yeah, and you know, it just says like it's finished with some coat of exterior oil, does it require replication?
It's what they do to the, to the. The substrate of the product allows it, it, it becomes sort of incredibly dense. So that the, that the stain itself does not weather off of it.
Okay.
Like I said, I, I can completely share the product with you, it's, it's really nice, there is, in San Francisco is, there is a, an outdoor. Um, plaza where it's used, has the entirety of the outdoor benches and seating area. And it is, looks like it's brand new, it's been there for pre-COVID, I know that.
Thank you, okay.
It's a solid wood product then?
Yeah.
That's created?
Solid wood.
Okay. And that's gonna be the exterior color?
That is, that is the product.
Yeah.
Um, so that, um. In the, in the town center, uh, you guys are responsible. Uh, to the town center for maintaining the appearance. Of the product, so if Town Centers came to you and said, hey, that's looking a little ragged, then it's your job to get it.
Presumably, yeah. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's one of those parts of the project that's like the, one of the more touchy-feely parts from a consumer level, like that's what they're gonna see. I would think from ownership's part, they would be receptive to that, that sounds.
Yeah, I worry about that wood, um, and graying or getting, you know.
Yeah, like, like I said, I think I'm, I'm, I'm happy to, to share that literature, because I, I. I go into this with the same amount of interpretation as, as others, I, I've seen enough stained buildings weather poorly. And like I said, I think this one, I feel. And like I said, I think this one, I feel confident about its lifespan.
Um I did have a question about the uh interior lighting and so forth. Um so in other facilities in town center, the interior lighting really pops out at night. And that was overlooked in the application. So what is the interior lighting here? Does it stay on all night? Are there any screens that you wanna have on all night? What's the?
Any on the? We haven't talked about lighting controls and what's on and what's on it. I, it might be screened or filmed. Um I can tell you that, that uh it's an open ceiling in that now and it will remain an open ceiling. It's. Fifty feet high in the air or our windows are eleven feet, you won't really see that. We do have some signature pendants that will double drop. One of them, there's, there's a bank cat. If you look at the plan, you'll see this kind of curved bank cat with a round table.
Yeah.
Right at the front window, there is a, there will be a significant pendant light there. And we are still deciding on it because it's an important fixture for the project. And then over the communal table, there will also be a significant uh. Fixure there, chandelier type thing, but again, fitting the vibe and and aesthetic of Rome.
So yeah, this, the after, the conditions state that everything will be on a timer, uh close, off at close of business and so forth for those exterior lights. And this is the part of the hearing where you say, yes, we understand and that's what will happen in perpetuity, right? That those lights will go off, right?
Yeah, you're talking about the exterior lights.
Exterior lights and you know, what we don't want is a glare. Um there's a certain uh shop in the town center that glares all night.
Oh, you're talking, are you talking interior or exterior?
Interior.
Interior, okay, yeah. And what about exterior in that regard?
Well, let, they go off at night, yeah.
I don't know what happens at night at quarter of a day, if it's just a.
Yeah, there's a ten P M, a close, ten P M.
Yeah, I mean, I.
Goes on.
Yeah, and then I don't think. I don't, I don't know.
Supposed to go off.
I don't, I don't know. I mean, I think whatever, whatever it is, I'm not sure.
Comment on that, what it is.
It's, it's eleven, it's eleven P M or um or close of business.
Right, and it's off until?
It's off until uh.
Next night?
Yeah.
Or can they turn it on during the day when it's a overcast, ugly day?
Um yes, yes, guess I can.
Yeah, okay. So there's some, there, there's some signs in town that don't get shut off at eleven.
I think that, I think the, the, the lighting signage requirements are, you know, completely up to whatever the city requirements are and. I'm true, I'd say that.
Anybody else have any questions? Before we go into, oh, yes, Daniel.
For the exterior, just exterior, no?
Go ahead, Daniel.
Are you?
We're talking about, we, we got into discussion about whether or not it's a red light or a side light of red. So now we've got some confusion on our part. We're gonna find, we're gonna find out. We're gonna find out right now. You can ask your question if you want.
Go ahead, Daniel.
Uh yeah, uh are you replacing any of the appliances and can you, what about energy use source?
So everything um every interior uh piece of equipment is dated and old. Um so we are really compelled to. Good thing is, we can bring it up to current uh efficiency standards. And uh that, that will, will happen. Um but it is, it is new equipment, yeah, even, yeah, even the hood, so. Um it, it was, things are pretty old there. It was an old Arby's. There's a lot of the old Arby's equipment is still there, including its walk-in box.
And some of the new equipment, will it be using uh natural gas?
It's a natural gas uh building already, so we have utilized the gas that's already there. Sorry, I'm looking through this lighting.
Thanks. So Jim, you wanted to?
Oh, I just was wondering, there's two tiles here, one's homes and one is brushed and a slate finish. Or is this just gonna be mixed and matched sort of randomly?
No, so there's, if you look in, in, at the uh the rendering, maybe even the elevation, you'll see that there are. Three uh full-size panels and tile and there's one. Marcelo, basically, it fills the gap where we don't have a tile. That one is the home version. The other ones are not. So that's, it essentially will read, it's a detail. It's gonna read like a, basically that tile, but you'll get a little bit of a shadow line at that, that detail.
And is, is there a requirement for that to be solid from the A B C or is it just because of you guys wanted to make that?
No, I was thinking it was as much to, to.
Traffic and.
It was concerns about people not wanting to sit in a place where they didn't feel like. That's what the material choice is, but it's even, it's a C M E wall underneath it to keep it as sturdy as possible. But it's definitely, and then the windscreen is there for, obviously, obviously, it's for wind. But uh really, I, we got, it's. Close, you know, property line, at least line is close to the sidewalk edge, particularly right at that, near, near that edge by Sees Candy. So I, it was the, I just felt it was a random thing to do.
Okay, so I think we're going to, and if you're done, um then we'll uh go into public comment for this thing and, but we won't close that. Cause I know you're gonna be back up there later.
Chair change.
Yes.
If I may, just um one note, cause I, it may come up and you may wanna ask questions about this, but um we did receive some late correspondence. And a lot of it was related to the energy use of um the fire pit specifically.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to address that, that um, you know, we did look at our um climate action plan and there is one. Policy and it states, um it's cap one dash seven. And it states, uh building and appliance electrification, promote electrification of building systems and appliances. That currently use natural gas, uh including heating systems, hot water heaters, stoves and clothes dryers. That's really the only policy that we found within the context of this issue um that would relate to this project. The first finding that you have to make tonight is related to um conformance with general plan, specific plans or any other. Uh plan level documents, generally, because this is a design review application, that means for things related to design. And this is, of course, is related to um energy use. Um and as I noted, we um cannot enforce our all-electric code at the moment. Um all jurisdictions are in this lurch due to some litigation that wasn't against us, but it's case law that we have to adhere to. Um so until that moves forward, we can't enforce our all-electric code, nor can we move forward on anything. Beyond what we have in our current regulations. And the regulations that we have in place that we can't enforce actually exempt restaurants from um all-electric. And that means all aspects of the restaurant, not just the cooking facilities, but um. So that to say, if, even if we were able to enforce our all-electric code, um this is a situation where we would not um require them to be all-electric. Um also, the all-electric regulations do not um require um all-electric for remodels. Um or renovations, so that would also not apply to this project. Um so I just wanted to make sure you were aware of those things, but. Just to encourage you to stay in your um design review realm and um try not to enter into that. But we do have this climate action plan policy, so as much as you want to provide additional recommendations or encouragement, you can do that. Um but I would discourage you from making any um recommendations or findings related to that alone.
That's very helpful. Thank you very much, okay. Um and if there's anybody who wants to make a public comment, that's part of the uh discussion. So.
We have, uh we do have um two public comments that were emailed to you um that arrived in several hours before the meeting, but I'd like to read those into the record.
Okay, all right. There's that, um we can start with those, um and. If there's anybody in the room that would like to comment and uh online, so. Uh uh so go ahead and read those as you can.
Okay, the, the first one was, is from David Muller um submitted uh today at two fourteen P M. Dear Planting Commission and staff, I understand that those building modifications covered in agenda item five B. May include one or more outdoor fireplaces or heaters that burn methane gas, AKA natural gas. I'd like to point out that Coram Dara's Climate Action Plan, Climate Emergency Resolution and recently adopted ordinance prohibiting glass. Gas appliances in new buildings are all focused on the urgent need to reduce the greenhouse gas emissions that are driving climate change. Burning natural gas products, CO2 and other greenhouse gases and the heat trapping properties of leaked methane associated with its use. Is much worse than the CO2. It's hard to see how, how approving construction of new gas fireplaces or heaters. Under this application would be consistent with the Coram Dara's goals to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. We're all for heating, outdoor eating, we're all for heated outdoor eating and socializing spaces. But please make sure that the heating is provided by electric features that are powered by clean renewable sources of electricity such as. Can be obtained from either M C E or P G N E. Sincerely, David Muller, Larkspur. And then another letter received at, at two fifty-six P M is from uh David Johnson. And he writes to your quarter Madera Planning Commission, thank you all for your, for what you do for our community. A note from the staff report offers that, quote, the applicant Rome Burgers. Currently serves their art, their artisan burgers at five Bay Area locations. And takes pride in their commitment to sustainability, community partnership and enhancing people's lives through better eating. Rome sources ingredients from local suppliers and farmers dedicated to creating quality products, end quote. Um the writer, the letter writer says, I also note that on Rome Burgers website, they state, quote. We are passionate about improving the health of our planet, end quote. The design that you are reviewing includes an exterior fossil fossil gas fueled fire pit. I request that you discourage the applicant from installing this and that you encourage that they replace this with a feature that is welcoming to their guests. Avoids the use of fossil fuels and is in better alignment with their values as well as the values of the town of Coram Dara. There are many options for them to pursue that could avoid wasteful use of energy. Think of a water or landscape feature or could use electricity or could not be fueled with. Or could use electricity or could be fueled with a less carbon intensive fuel. And he, he puts, has a website um. And then lastly, for, for reasons, the same letter, for reasons. And until the planning code is revised, the town should be discouraging installation of new fossil fuel gas. Powered appliances in commercial and residential improvements, fossil gas. Fueled features such as the one proposed here are especially egregious as they are often burning gas continuously. Even when there is no person around the feature to see it. I am reminded that today our atmospheric carbon dioxide level is four hundred and sixteen parts per million and rising. Our collective goal is to restore this to a level below three hundred and sixty-five parts per million. Thank you very much. David Johnson, uh Chair of the Town of Coram Dara's Climate Action Committee and ex-Planning Commissioner for the Town of Coram Dara.
Excuse me, Chair Chase, if I may, in response to these comments, echo uh the Community Development Director's observations. As concerned as we all are about the environment and climate change, uh nothing in the design review regulations really ties into. This impact on the environment or indeed any kind of gas or greenhouse gas related issues, so. Unfortunately, it's, it's really not within the purview of the decision that's in front of the Planning Commission at this time.
Thank you, yes. And just looking through the findings, uh required findings again, yeah, clear. So thank you, yeah. Um, all right, Tracy, uh do you have anybody online that would like to comment?
I do not.
Okay, in the room. Anybody else wanna contribute a public comment? No. So seeing none. Then we'll take it back to the commission here. We'll close that, yes.
We could have a five-minute seventh inning stretch.
Absolutely, right, okay.
Nice call.
All right, we're back to um the Rome Martyrs and Burger Review here um at the Court of Madura Planning Commission. And we brought it back up here to the commission to talk about this application. So um I'll start over you on my right with you, Daniel. Um and your thoughts about this and what you'd like to contribute to approval of this or not?
Yeah, uh as I said, I uh compliment them on uh. A really opening this building and this site up uh with the glass and, you know, making it uh just a better experience for. Pedestrians and for, for visitors uh in the town center. Um uh you know, I, I, I concur with staff's findings of its consistency with the general plan, uh the town's design review. Guidelines and the town center design guidelines uh and um can support this um uh application.
Okay, great, thank you. Now to you, Valerie.
All right, um well, thank you again for putting everything together, everything super clear and understandable to um comment on. I have few design comments on the exterior. Uh so previous design obviously was very enclosed and very dark and no one could see it. Uh and right now it feels it went way too open. Uh there's no greenery, there are cars coming very close to that curb. Um so I was wondering if there would be kind of a consideration to play some plantations there to have some landscaping around, just to. Provide a little bit of that privacy and the shade during summer. It gets really hot for people to sit outside. Um and you know, kind of no shade, it will create um a little bit of a challenge there. There are also a new planter that was built right in front of it. Where that is made out of wood as well. Um it's a really nice timber and I feel like it can um. Just compete with what you are offering, so I was wondering if you would consider. To stain your wood to reflect a little bit of what or complement of what the wood that has been used in the planter. Uh so that it at least matches or have the same character and not drastically different. Um and also in regards to the retaining wall material, so the porcelain tile feels also a little bit too cold to the town center around. Again, the landscaping around the town center is using a lot of wood, there is a lot of warmth to it. Especially against um the lighter kind of concrete-like looking facade. I think adding warmth would uh really complement that. Um so again, just, this is for the consideration and I was wondering if you would um challenge. A little bit of the palette, just again, to make a character more compelling um and balanced throughout. Because again, like I'm, um I have two kids, I'm imagining them running there all the time. And uh I really like the facade design and the takeout window. I just feel like a lot, a lot more greenery would be um. A little bit nicer, just some more warming, especially in the corner because that's where the cars are. And I know we're not supposed to, or maybe we can comment and recommend, but we're not supposed to make our decisions based on the uh environmental issues. But uh we would encourage obviously to look into the more electric fire pit outside, um if that's a possibility. Not to use the gas, obviously, public really cares about it, even though we won't hold our vote, right? Against if that's not gonna happen, but we highly encourage, especially because you're claiming. To be sustainable, right, like being local and trying to create um more um responsible. Uh dining experience for people. Um and also I say that for every single business that go into the town center that. We are yet to look for that retailer who would go on for lead retail uh certification. It would be an amazing example. And again, business is yours, um could consider that as well. It's, it's just a recommendation, but. I feel like uh with the character that you have, kind of caring about the community and the environment, um. Um, maybe it's something that you guys can look into and provide and be the first pioneer in the town center to do that.
Thank you, um. Good comments. Margaret. Your thoughts here?
Um, I was gonna say the same thing about the planting, although I think that the restaurant. Previous restaurant was a little overwhelmed. It was healthy, um, I think that this definitely needs some kind of softening greenery. I. It's really missing. Um, especially um. Because it just feels having some green there, having plants there, having something oral there would would, it would feel healthier. Um, I'm not crazy about this little fence thing. Uh, I'd even rather see something that kind of echoed what you have on the side. Tile or? It's hard to tell. If this sort of looks. Blimzy. Um. I think that the other thing, and said you were open to suggestions. Don't have anything to do with this, so here's my suggestion. Every week there's a farmer's market at the town center. And I would encourage you to find some activity or way of using the farmer's market and eat locally and that kind of thing in your restaurant, I don't, I'm not sure how. I'm sure you could think of a lot of good ideas, but um I think it would. It would bring the idea of eating locally and eating fresh things. Really to the to 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 give you extra people coming by. And I think that would be a great way to integrate the restaurant into the uh into the town center. So that would be huge suggestion, I I personally like the town center very much, I like the way each place has its own personality. But I also like to see that it's one of a whole, and I think that's one way to do it. And just to make a comment about something that really isn't applicable to this specifically. My undergraduate degree is in design and environmental analysis. So my idea of design and design review has a lot to do with the environment. And so I would say that we would be well placed to take a broader view of design. And to just narrow it down to paint colors and electrical ovens.
Okay, so I'm I'm curious about your comment there about broadening that, so how would you apply that here, I'm not sure what that means?
Well, I I particularly don't like these fire pit ideas. The smell on top of everything else to me really is a horrible smell. They have a a huge fire pit over um at the restaurant is farm and it's between Sonoma and Napa. And they have a very long fire pit. And it's horrible to sit there with your cocktail because it smells bad. Um, I'm sure you could find something better smelling, but I don't think it's that much of a big deal, and it seems to be a big deal in the community. To just find something electrical. Um, or just make it warming, you know, just that warming stone. Exactly, or just make it a round table.
All right, thank you, uh, heard that, Mr. Rizzo.
Well, I was gonna comment about the wall as well, but I've got a completely different opinion. I kind of felt like um that that railing was kind of interesting and and kind of dynamic um. From a retail perspective, but. Uh, and I felt like the the solid wall, when you're coming down from from Sephora and sees it feels very kind of restrictive and kind of uninteresting as a focal point coming down the sidewalk, um, and I could see that if it's gonna stay a solid material, maybe getting set back a foot so you could put a planning area in there to soften it up a little bit. Wouldn't take that much square footage out of that patio space if it was gonna stay solid, but I don't feel like this material even relates to anything else in a in a material palette and would kind of maybe encourage pulling something off that I saw it if even even the stucco would, I like the wood over there, stucco and maybe with a little planner in front of it, I think would tie everything together nicely if it's gonna stay solid. But other than that, I mean, I I can meet all the the criteria uh for making the findings and uh seems to be very consistent with our goals and policy of the general plan and specific plan of town. And town center, so.
Okay. Um. Well, we're generating some thoughts here and um I'm going to add to some of this, I agree with Valerie um that some shade element is probably necessary here because it gets hot out there. Um, in the alley down the way toward the other restaurants, they have umbrellas over them, this is gonna get a little warm out there, I would think. I agree with Jim that maybe this partition wall could incorporate some greenery or something behind it, so it's not such a hard wall right there. The um uh table divider area, I agree with Jim is is interesting uh as a barrier, it's kind of uh transparent. Had a client do a wall like that in uh computer code. Dots. And uh, so you know, you could go there, but um it needs, it needs something else in front because that's a big barrier now. I you want the transparency, so how do you introduce greenery, how do you introduce shade, all of that, I don't quite know how to do that or how to discuss it here further and how to put it out to the applicant or put it back to staff with any of that. Um, we, I think I'm hearing we all agree that the facade of the restaurant and the interior, all of that is okay, right, everybody's on that same page, right? It's, we're all talking about the exterior and what happens in front of the restaurant and what that looks like.
Add.
Yeah.
Uh, just tiny on that note, since you're talking about it, um, the direction of the wood, um, that's you you have horizontal and the vertical, and this is maybe just me to kind of uh, to me bothers that it's not following one direction and not consistent. Um, but you can take a look at it, that's just my.
So um. I think what we would uh endeavor to do is to ask for something, I'm hearing that from the other commissioners about planting. And um I we can't say add shade, what you guys are gonna find, you're gonna need shade out there. And what does that look like, you just bring in movable umbrellas as needed? Most of the day, okay.
That's that being said, I I don't disagree that.
Well, we'd get you back up in front of the microphone so we could record what you're saying, but um, so um. You're, you could turn these little walls into a planter of some kind. If you're willing to do that, I agree with Jim is that the tile on that facade is kind of a standalone material. And it could be uh warmed, it could be
wood.
Created something.
Yeah, even bringing that wood out there would would kind of tie it into the facade, maybe.
Put in the planter.
Right. So um. I think the um proposed uh uh resolution and findings are pretty clear. Um, but what we are saying uh relates to number four. That the structure, site plan and landscaping are in scale and harmonious, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So, and the landscaping is mentioned in two or three of these findings. So. We can um agree that the the restaurant, the facade and all of that is fine. But we would ask for a change to the planters and something um than the wall and the planters as a adjunct, and that could be brought back to staff, would you guys agree, or do you want to see it back in front of us? Up here at the commission. You guys okay with letting them administer a change to the divider wall?
I am.
Valerie, Daniel? Okay. Staff?
So what I heard was a a change to the design of the divider wall. And the addition of plantings.
Right, so the planter wall behind or the the divider wall behind the fire pit right there.
Right.
To be made a, you need the wall. Gotta have that, gotta be shielding, needs to be a material that relates to the building facade, am I hearing that?
Mm-hmm.
Right? Uh, more like that rather than a tile surface on that. And adding planters, you could make that thicker, put planter inside of that division. Or even the uh transparent fence, you could turn into some planters, those could be movable uh landscape pots of some kind out there. So.
Okay, so what I what I hear you saying in terms of the, I'll call it the C M U wall, the C M U wall with with a covering, you want that covering to match one of the, one of the materials that are on the building. So wood or stucco or?
Yes, a warmer material, softer material, the stucco would be softer, but not particularly more appealing.
Uh, it's gonna be.
Right.
Blend into it.
Yeah, so the the wood or one of those uh woods would be better, right? Please go ahead, get up on the microphone there, yeah.
Uh, well, John John wants to as well, but um. Some of our existing interiors are just really heavily wooded and we're just trying to get away from that a little bit, so it doesn't feel like a cabin, and I feel like if we did the whole wall wood, we're just getting right back into that, so I don't know if there is something else you would be open to. Uh, we we and we definitely are super on board for um the plants and the greenery outside, I think my business partner who's not here is, you know, she's totally operations focused and um, because we had discussed that, but there's concern of uh watering and keeping the plants alive and pests and things like that, but I think we could hopefully find some greenery that's a little bit lower maintenance, but um just in terms of the the material on the um, it is the, is it disagreeable because it doesn't match, it it just feels like out of place, the?
It was very cold.
Cold.
On the outside and um.
Would it be warmed up with the plants or still kind of?
It it could be warmed up with the plants, but that particular material is just doesn't fit the palette.
Yeah.
Palette throughout, so maybe there is a look like, again, we we suggested maybe like a stucco that matches the facade, but to your point of the interior, wooden interior, you don't really see it on the outside, but you do see the outside wood and the planters that are there, so right, so this wall right now really stands out.
For sure.
And that's like, I I get your point, you probably looked at the interior plans for a long time and the material palace and stuff, so it's kind of all combines in your head, but in in, you know, from the outside. Uh, you won't really see much of the wood on the inside.
Uh, yeah, I'm saying, and and this John wants to get up.
Yeah.
I I, yeah, I think the wood would sort of balance it on the other side, I mean. There was wood on that wall, it would be a nice kind of balance.
Yeah.
I think one of the things you're not, you're not seeing in this particular rendering is that the you're looking at that wall as as it's out, as its outside face only, it's inside face where the actual bench is. To your point, the bench is reminiscent of that planter slats in the same way. Um, Lisa's design is slatted in the same way, um, and then the back wall. The seat bench back wall is this tile that reemerges from the interior, if you go back to that last image.
Lower right hand corner of that.
The lower left hand corner there now, you can see that A, that decorative tile is the inside, so that is that side. Notwithstanding what you were saying about the sort of softening up of the perimeter walls in general, I think we would be happy to look at adding um some softness there. Um. Um. The material palette of the fence, it's called the fence, the A B C barrier, um, is the infill panels are uh placeholder until we can come up with something that makes better sense, we wanted to get something out in front of of everybody knowing that there's probably a much more iterative session we needed to have internally to get a better design out. But I think incorporated into that, I would, I do think having some softness and some planting there would be very helpful. I think that piece of the project would benefit by having some of that. Um. As for the 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 wall with the tile on it, um. That piece is, again, has the same issues, it could benefit from a little softness, agreed. I think it could also have um a bit more continuity across the entirety of that seating area, so what we can do is look to try to take some materiality of both and try to bring it together, so it's a little more harmonious. As for shade. This building truly is in shadow for most of the day, it's it's an east facing facade, so it's there's, it's in shade all day, we have talked about umbrellas, um, if umbrellas are acceptable to um the 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 city, the town, um, I think it would be something that we could, we would look into, I think we were just opting at this point to have more transparency into the building so people could see it and not brand it from an umbrella.
Yeah, I think I think it's mostly the comment is to provide the ambiance and causing co- closeness of the environment, right, as well, because you don't want to look like a fast food restaurant, right, in a way too. And a lot of restaurants around, they do have the seating with umbrellas, it's cozy, right, families want to sit down there.
Right, I mean, I I I hear your comments, I mean, I think we have, we can take a pass through and and try to work through those, I mean, the the getting the rest of the building approved, I think is primary importance, so we path forward.
Um, planting at that edge, um. Well, there, look at that.
Planting at at the edge of.
Yeah, I was just thinking, you know.
The new wall or the?
You know, when they did uh Sephora, everybody lamented the tear down of the ficus growing on the building. It's back and it looks great. Just saying, right?
Counter, same between the counter burger and the star burger.
Right.
That we'd say.
Uh, okay, so that uh. Yeah, all right, so where we are, uh, thank you for your uh input there and response to this. I think that we're at the point where we would say that we can all make the findings with a request for a recent metal to staff of the uh the uh seating divider on the left and the inclusion of planting at that point and to the uh west. Uh, where the metal rail is, right? That's what we're all talking about.
So you you want the, I I'm, one, one concern I have is that if they add vegetation between, I'll call it the C M U wall and the driveway, they're gonna restrict this, the width of that um sidewalk and may not be A D A compatible. Um, so that's just one. Inward, right, right, they can obviously move the wall. Yeah, so that's what you're suggesting, if if that's a, if that's a a pinch point, move the wall closer to the building, put in plants.
Yeah, it could even be a step thing, I mean, I I was, it could be, I I've seen a lot of, I, when I walked the property today, there was a lot of planners that were anywhere from six inches to a foot. That just had little hedges and it looks great, and that's sort of like the the way they've treated a lot of those uh walls in in the center. Um, and I think they could design a wall that's even tiered where it's got a little planter and it comes up and and it would break the scale down, look really nice.
So, yeah, in summary, that a different materiality on that bench back um. To echo something on the, from. To echo something on the from the building. Uh, material that's softer um and uh inclusion of some planting strip uh there in some way. So.
Do you guys feel like it's necessary on the on the light part? I don't really feel like it's necessary.
I mean, maybe like movable plants or.
Have some kind of plants, but not necessarily integrated into the system.
Yeah. Okay. So. Who wants to take a stab at saying this in verbiage? You're a good wordsmith, Mr. Rizzo.
Okay, do we? So it's interesting, uh, and we call it modifications or conditions? Because I used uh conditions on the last. Uh, it's not really condition, is it a condition approval or a modification of the application?
I I would call it a condition of approval.
Okay. Okay, I'm going to approve in the matter of a major design review application for modifications to the existing retail space. Uh, number three, four, six, within the Quatermodera Town Center file PL. Two, three dash zero, zero, six, three. With. Uh, the conditions. That. Staff. Reviews the landscaping and patio plan. Um, to modify the existing solid wall and to add some additional vegetation to patio space.
You guys good with it? That sounded very good, Jim. Someone say you could write that, um, so, all right, we have a second on that.
My second.
Yeah, Margaret, okay. We'll call.
All right, Commissioner Kenny?
Yes.
Commissioner Bandell?
Yes.
Commissioner Busher.
Yes.
Please say your name just so I can hear it again. Busher.
Yes.
Thank you. Vice Chair Rizzo.
Yes.
And Chair Chase.
Yes. Okay. This is fun.
Now to be serious, how soon is this gonna? We lost one hamburger joint, we need. Oh, good.
Now the sweating starts.
Welcome, thank you.
Okay. Um, Phil, do you need to read an appeal period on this?
Uh, yes, same thing as I said before, uh, this item may be appealed within ten calendar days of this evening. Applications are available at the Community Development Department. The fee is three hundred dollars.
All right. Thank you. All right. All right, so then at nine twenty, let's see what we can do to. Wrap this up and go home. Um. Commissioners, uh, Daniel, you have a a semi recollected report, you said?
Uh, yeah. So I attended the town council meeting. Uh, last uh Tuesday. And um. The two major things on the agenda were. Uh, the short term rental ordinance. And uh review of the parks master plan, draft parks master plan.
Wow.
Uh. The short term rental uh ordinance uh passed, uh, there were. Some adjustments made based on the planning commission's comments and town council thanked us for our review. Uh, Margaret spoke, um. Uh. Not in favor of the ordinance. Uh. And. What?
To no avail.
To no avail, uh, and uh. Uh. The um, a few of the, a few of the things, uh, there were a lot of questions about enforcement similar to the ones we've had. Uh, how it's gonna work and so forth. Um. The council, even though it says the would be reviewed in two years, the council asked the. Staff to come back with an informal review and update uh uh within a year. Um. Uh, or even sooner, uh, depending on uh how how it goes that the implementation date is January first. Uh, and um. Uh, you know, there were some questions, is that too soon to be able to get the regulations in place and so forth, but. Uh, the town manager thought that uh that would be doable and. And uh that it would take the applicant sometime in any case to provide the paperwork that's needed to be provided. Um. The Parks and Rec Master Plan uh was well received by the council. Uh, I think the consultants and and staff emphasized that it was really a framework plan and and. We didn't go in, they didn't go into a lot of detail about each improvement that was proposed. Um, but said that it was sort of this framework could be implemented over time and there was enough flexibility as you get into the design details to make adjustments. Um. Uh, the thing that I thought was most interesting, uh, they they looked at um the. The uh, the park in historic town center, uh, and they looked at um. Uh, another park, but what came out of that conversation. Uh, was some suggestions that we shouldn't really be looking at just these parks. Uh, and there was also recommendations for renovation of the town of the community center. And there was a feeling that we really should be maybe looking at those two areas more comprehensively. Uh, not just the boundaries of the park. Uh, and particularly the community center where the town owns adjacent property, commercial property. Uh, that is, uh, I think was referred to as being designated as parkland. I don't, I don't know the details of that, but. Um. Uh. As though it had been originally acquired, acquired for that purpose, but I I. I don't know the details, so I thought that was interesting in the context of. Um. You know, thinking more broadly as. A Margaret had said, you know, and saying, well, we're not just doing this little park, we really wanna look at the context and how it supports the commercial area. And so forth, so. I don't know what will come of that uh relative to. You know, whether the town council initiates a study, you know, what role the planning commission might have in that, but. I found that interesting and exciting. Uh, so that's my report.
Didn't they talk about a budget uh regarding any of this at all?
Yeah, there are budget items for all the items in the master plan, uh, and I, again, I forgot to bring it, the draft, but they were um. Uh. Was it was a lot of money. And I think the council kind of focused on, well, what's the low hanging fruit, you know, that we can invest um. Uh, a little bit of money and get some mileage out of it until we can figure out how to fund this. Uh, in particular, I think the renovation of the. The community center, I can't remember the exact number, Amy, I don't know if you know, it was something like eighteen million and. They were saying, well, we're building a new town hall for less, you know. Uh, I I don't quote me on that number, but anyway, it was a very large number and council really questioned. You know. Whether that was what they were doing and why it was costing so much, budgeted so much, but. Um. The. You know, I think the idea that this is framework plan and why there's budget numbers in here and they're big numbers, this may be implemented over ten or even twenty years. Um.
But this came out of in part the survey that was done and then.
This, yeah, the survey which set and and the community meetings, which sort of sent pre- preferences, so they had a matrix that um. Identified uh for each area. What the prior primary program elements would be. Uh, based on that input, both the survey and the and the neighbor, the community meetings they had. Um. And uh. But again, they were sort of saying, you know. Some things might change, you know, we suggested a picnic area, there are some questions about that, you know. Uh, because it was displacing some some other uses that the community liked now. And I think they also emphasized that when it gets down to more detailed programming and design, there would still be another. Round of community process, particularly with neighbors, uh. So I think that was encouraging that there's nothing was sort of cast in stone at this point.
Did Mickey Park make the cut? Are they gonna move forward with design on that?
Uh. There were quite a few recommendations for Mickey Park, but again, nothing was. Can, you know, there was no decision to fund anything. At that meeting, uh, there was a lot of discussion about the playfields and. Uh, I know Public Works has been making some improvements and in aerating and fertilizing and so forth. Uh, but there's a two thousand, two hundred thousand, I think. Something like a two hundred thousand dollar budget item to redo some areas and then they question whether. Uh, really. That's gonna pay off as opposed to spending two million dollars and redoing the whole thing. Properly and. Public Works made the comment that. Uh, they felt they would get, they would take a couple of years to get, you know, the programming and design and construction documents and and all that. To do the big project on the playfields, so they felt a couple hundred thousand dollars, which apparently had already been authorized, would be well spent in the interim.
Great, well, thank you for all of that information. That's enlightening. Big items, yeah. Thank you, um. Amy, do you have anything for us? Uh, tell us, talk about.
No, just one quick thing on our schedule, um, and we can do this by email as well if you don't know tonight, but I did wanna. Confirm whether or not November twenty eighth would be a potential meeting date that we wanted to keep on the books. That's the. Tuesday after Thanksgiving and then also if you all are okay canceling the December twenty sixth um meeting. But um, as noted in your agenda, we do have a proposed item on November fourteenth. Um, and. You know, just thinking if we may have some other ones if November twenty eighth is possible, um. Wanted to get your input on that.
I'm planning on the twenty eighth. Okay.
I could make it, but.
It'll be jet lag.
We can try to avoid scheduling items, but um just wanted to get some some general input, so we can always do a quorum check. To make sure by email, um, if we have some items for that date.
I'm okay with all of those.
Are you comfortable um canceling the twenty sixth?
I am, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, all right, we'll start there and then we'll um. We'll let you know we have some items on the twenty eighth and we'll email you a, just to check in to see who's available that night.
All right.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right. Um, we don't have any uh minutes to approve, right? So. Um. Think with that said. Um. You're saying that parklets are gonna come back for us? Yeah.
Yes, that'll be coming before you, but um that will be more of a report item for input, um, it's not under your purview as planning commission because it's in another section of the code. Uh, but we wanted to bring that forward. Martha's actually um authoring that ordinance and we'll be presenting that.
Okay. Well, it's great. Well, it's nine thirty. I think it's time to adjourn this meeting. Thank you.